Meeting is called to order at 7:03. Please rise and the district clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion in a second that the agenda of March 26, 2019 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include approval of minutes of March 12, 2019 as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, and approval of a request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Our Treasurer's Report. May I have a motion in a second that the Treasurer's Report, including the cash, the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending January 31, 2019 be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right, special reports?
There are no special reports.
All right. Okay. Any visitors tonight? No? Okay. Levia, my goodness, so quickly.
Good evening.
Hello.
To start off my report tonight, from Indian Landing, students participated in the Spring Bonnet Parade where students wore all kinds of crazy hats in honor of the coming spring. Cobles held the Creekside Steel Drum Band and they performed at Cobles and the kids loved and were very inspired by the performance. Harris Hill 5th graders enjoyed a field trip to the Eastman Theater to see the Rochester Philharmonic Orchestra. They were very active listeners and the 5th graders were also able to come to the high school and see the preview of Fiddler on the Roof. Teachers even met with Harris Hill alumni. Kindergartners traveled to RMSC to study forces that shape habitats and how living creatures adapt to changing habitats. They also held their kindergarten teddy bear parade as a celebration of their love for reading. At Scribner, the Student Council collected and delivered 1,200 hygiene items to the House of Mercy Homeless Shelter. The Girls on the Run Program begun where students will prepare to run a 5K. At Bay Trail, this week is Career Week and students are hearing from surgeons, local business owners, cybersecurity, and so much more. They held their 8th grade formal with a night full of music, dancing, and lots of fun. They also are holding their annual March Madness Foul Shooting Tournament where students from all grades participate and it is broadcasted all over the school. Very fun. At Penfield High School, two students were recognized with the Princeton Prize in Race Relations for pushing issues on race. The Penfield High School Science Olympiad Team earned four medals at their state competition. The robotics team held the Second Annual International Potluck for two teams from China and they also competed at the Finger Lakes Regional Competition and received the Team Spirit Award and one teammate received the Dean's List Finalist Award. At Penfield High School, the Fiddler on the Roof production was very successful and exciting. And district-wide, students from all schools participated in a band extravaganza and performed at the Penfield High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Levia. Any questions or comments for Levia? So Dr. Putnam and I got to meet some of our, some of the visitors from China and we were able to have a little chat with them and it was kind of a warm spring day and they, but there was snow on the ground and they were so excited to see the snow because these people live closer to Hong Kong and they were very excited about the snow. And you know, and you know how we've been plagued with snow and it was, there was all this grass around and very little snow falling and they were in town for the whole week and it was a warm week. So I felt bad about that, but what they did see, they really liked.
It was fun. They were excited for snow and we want it to go away now. So it was a good, you got a good humor with that.
Right. Thank you, Levia.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's Reports.
So this evening I just have some student and staff honors that Levia stole all of them from me, but I'll say them again. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. San Soucy who's going to talk about the 2019-20 Benefits Budget Review and then, believe it or not, the total Revenue Budget Review for 1920. So congratulations to PHS students Reece and Alexis who were named winners of the Penfield Rotary Vocal Competition and they're moving on to the regional competition. And this is, I mentioned this with Rotary now that Catherine Dean and I are both members of Rotary. Myself as a sort of superintendent, I look at it as representing the entire district as Rotary. And they talked about this is one of the competitions where less and less kids are signing up for it and Penfield is doing really well because we're, have a very strong partnership with our Rotary. DECA Competition, congratulations. We've already talked about our students who moved on to the sort of regionals and congratulations to the team and also Alexander Bruno winning first place in the Principles of Finance Competition at the New York State DECA State Career Conference which is held here in Rochester. And he'll now go on to compete in the International Career Development Competition at the end of April. And just again, it's really cool because DECA is a relatively new club to Penfield High School and we're really building and growing and it's pretty exciting. Congratulations to our very own Athletic Director, Mr. Pete Chamo, on receiving the Dr. John Foley Professional Development Award from the New York State Athletic Administrators' Association. I will tell you that Pete is not one to look for kudos, so whenever I can sneak his picture in here and say congratulations to him, he does a lot of great work for our athletics teams. Some of our great art students here at the high school have their photography featured in a showing called Through the Student Lens. It's an exhibit at Image City Photography Gallery through April 14. I won't read all the students' names, they're in the agenda, but if you're interested, you can stop by Image City Photography and see many high school art, but especially some of our incredible student artists being represented there. We talked a little bit about robotics competition, so they had a Spirit Award at the Finger Lakes Regional Competition which was a lot of fun. I know a couple of board members got out there. I was able to go out. I think some of our administrators were there too, as well as numerous teachers and families. But it's amazing, I would just share as board member, when you do that, bless you, because we do graduation at RIT and it just, it always amazes me that they can transform this beautiful graduation venue that looks very, you know, sort of ready for graduation to a complete chaos of robots doing crazy things. So bless you. The RIT does an amazing job. And congratulations to Kyle Berg who was recognized with the First Dean's List Finalist Award. I'll be the first to tell you that while I own Robotics Pants, I don't quite understand everything about First Robotics, but I am told that this is an extremely prestigious award and for one of our students to win it is absolutely wonderful. So congratulations to Kyle and all that he does for the robotics team. Science Olympiad, we've mentioned and there's a picture of the team and they're great at state finals. Special recognition goes out to Christina Pendlebury and Megan DeFranco for placing third in Write It, Do It, and Nicole Page and Bella Slano for placing eighth in Forensics. So congratulations to our Science Olympiad Team. I think just last meeting, we had the middle school Science Olympiad Team here and so this is sort of building from middle school all the way through high school. This is, I think, one of the coolest things, so just a congratulations to PHS Senior Suzanne John on having her short memoir titled American Barber's Monsters in Time published in the Sandy River Review, a literary magazine published by the University of Maine. And so I think that's great. And I love the image because it looks like the back of the cover of her book that she'll write one day. So I think it's just wonderful. So congratulations to Suzanne. Just as a reminder for the board, we look at sports booster donations. We thank the boosters, especially our sports boosters group, a great organization that comes together and supports our athletic programs. And over the last couple of years, we've really worked to make sure, following our policy, is that donations get approved by the board or reviewed by the board first before we accept things that we, because once we accept them, they become ours and our responsibility. And so these are donations, the sports boosters are ready and willing to purchase for us. A portable waterproof sound system for baseball and softball, a snow roller for the Nordic Ski Groomer, sideline ponchos to be shared by fall and spring sports programs, an Apple iPod for girls volleyball, a tripod iPad holder for girls lacrosse, and portable coaching boxes for boys and girls volleyball. These are all what I would refer to, and we've reviewed them through district office, what I refer to as nice to haves, that essentials, anything that's essential or have to have for the program, that falls on the district and the taxpayer to make sure that we're having those things. These are all sort of nice to haves and that's why we appreciate the sports boosters doing this for us. And that is the end of my presentation. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Dr. San Soucy for the budget.
Thank you. Tonight's review, I'm going to, it was presented in, under the, on the slide as two different portions of the budget. So benefits, we'll talk about that briefly and then, but I'll roll right into totals and where we're at with regard to this year's budget. But before I do that, I would just point out that the other transition we're making tonight, because we're coming to the end, as we're beginning to build our presentation that we'll use with the community and as we start to have conversations outside of these rooms. As you know, we always start that conversation here with district goals. We certainly also always do that in the community, just to remind and explain to folks sort of that board leadership structure and how, what the board does informs what happens in the budget. But also as part of this presentation, we always like to remind folks what it is that they are paying for, right? So we don't produce, as I often say, we don't produce widgets. We can't point to last year's production of whatever. We don't have a profit margin to talk about. We provide education to students and so we need some metrics to help people, remind people and to get their heads sort of around that. So in the routine of these things, Dr. Putnam has been kind enough to sort of lead that, so I'll ask that we...
Tried to get rid of that, but you remembered. No, I am happy to do this part of the presentation when we talk about budget. And just as Mark mentioned, the goals, and I always just like to point out to the community and groups that we meet, is that I do give kudos to our school board that maintains relatively consistent goals every year, because it's really hard to build a three, a five, a 10-year program when the goals change every single year. So thank you to the board for doing that. And obviously, we want academic excellence. We also want to focus on the whole student because it's more than just academics, it's social, emotional well-being. We love here in Penfield our partnerships, both internal and external partnerships on what we can do to build. And then, because we're talking about the budget, it's fiscal responsibility and making sure that we are using taxpayer dollars wisely. This is coming from everybody who lives in Penfield Central School District and we want to make sure that our choices reflect the needs of the district and of the community. And so we talk about building a bright future in Penfield. And so just, I'd like to mention this first slide is really focused around test scores and that is our first goal with academic achievement. And all four Penfield Elementary Schools ranked in the top 12 out of 162 schools in the Rochester area in 2018 and that's based on four years of test scores. And so I just, you know, top 12 sounds great and then when you look at that, there's 162 elementary schools, it really is phenomenal and I'm proud to raise my kids here. Bay Trail Middle School was ranked third out of 97 area middle schools in 2018, again, based on four years of test scores. And Penfield High School was named to Newsweek Magazine's prestigious list of America's Best High Schools. Really, you think about the number of high schools nationally and little old Penfield High Schools sitting on that list, it's pretty exciting. And then as a district, we are ranked fourth out of 67 area school districts in 2018, based on four years of test scores. I'm sorry, but it's like the hair club for men that I am not just the president, but I am, I am a user as well. I'm not just a superintendent. I am a parent of kids in this district. I moved to this district before I ever thought I'd be principal or superintendent. My kids will graduate from Penfield, all of them. I'm proud to say that. And so when I mention this and we talk about ranked based on test scores, I proudly say publicly, anytime I get a chance, I'll go toe-to-toe with any district that we do things better for kids here. We really focus on that social, emotional health. We're continuing to build upon that and it's more than just academics and test scores. So the second slide sort of talks about some great things in Penfield as well. 96% graduation rate last year, the state average is 80. 92% of our graduates continued on to college. 96% of our graduates earned a Regents diploma and an outstanding 77% of those earned advanced designation. So it's above and beyond what the state requires. So 77% of our graduates last year exceeded what the state says you need in order to get a high school diploma in New York. And then 139 students and graduates were named AP Scholars in 2018, including six national scholars. Again, a lot of data there is based on test scores, but some really amazing things that our kids are doing. And we talk about that in some of this, we talked about tonight, it's not just about test scores, it's about having a safe environment that students can truly find passion and enjoy while they're in kindergarten through 12th grade. We once again are named a best community for music education with 126 of our students were selected for state and county music festivals. Science Olympiad, we just talked about, the PHS team earned 48 medals at regionals and four medals at states. And as you know, we heard from the Bay Trail team that did wonderful at regionals and are heading to states the first weekend of April. Odyssey of Mind, a Bay Trail team placed third, fifth, and sixth in regional competition. Some districts just have enough interest to send one team for this really creative Odyssey of Mind that's been around for a long time. We send multiple teams and they come back in third, fifth, and sixth place. Really very cool. Athletics, we'd be here all night if I spent the time talking about our numerous county and sectional championships, but great programs for music, athletics, clubs, and extracurricular activities that really, I think, lend itself to building a bright future here in Penfield. And now, I'll turn it back to Mark to get into the nitty-gritty of the budget.
Thank you. So just to remind folks where we're at in the process. So we're coming towards the end. Began in October, we've been, the board's been patient enough with me as we've worked through all of these components, beginning with the calendar, the audit, where we look back at last year and how we did, look at some goals, talk about some assumptions, where do we think we want to end up, review data around tax cap and reserves, talk about our budget forecast and where we want to end up in terms of long-range planning. And then in January, we really began the nitty-gritty of the budget itself, worked our way through both instructional presentations, the capital presentation, and the administrative presentation. And tonight, I'm sorry, BOSI's at the last meeting and now tonight we'll look at benefits. Take a little bit of a look, a quick look at revenue, fund balance, and where we're at for this year as we move towards the close. April 22nd, the deadline for board candidates. And then we'll need to adopt, approve and adopt at April 23rd. So this is where we left the last meeting. So this is year-over-year in each of those budget packages. And you can see that, as of the last meeting, there haven't been dramatic changes, but that blue bar, that unfulfilled $25 million blue bar really represents benefits for all of our employees. So spread across all of those other packages in the board, administration, in student support, in buildings around transportation, this is a people business. I've emphasized that throughout this year's presentations very consistently. And in addition to salary, benefits are a part of that consideration. So social security, health insurance, disability, and so on are very real components and they form $25 million worth of value of our budget. It's about 26% of the entire budget. Over a quarter of our entire budget provides benefits for our employees. That, oops, that $25 million for this year will be going up about one-half of 1%, $122,800. That's unusually low. For those of you who are used to this and have been in this, participated in this conversation, that's not what we normally expect to see because of recent changes in teachers' retirement. Teacher retirement costs, employees' retirement costs have for the last many years been going up. That's moderated, they're beginning to go down. You'll see that in just a minute. But before I get to that, that's helping us out in this year, but very unusually, I think, in this year's, when they release estimated rates for the next year, they, there's, you know, usually a short letter that explains why the rates are changing, what's driving the change, and so on. And in this year, they were very careful to point out that the lower rates that we're seeing probably won't continue in the future. And so I, just because of the necessary market performance and some concerns about the outlook for the market as we move forward. So I included this slide because that sort of summarizes that. You know, the, for teachers' retirement, the, our contribution, our share, teachers contribute, employees contribute, the plan earns, makes, invests the money that we've all contributed and those investments provide part of the funding, but the employer's contribution was in double digits for 30 years. It fell off beginning in the 80s, based on, a great part on really strong stock market returns, but it's climbing back up. And as of so far this year, this far into this decade, we're at about 11.44%. And I think the warning is that they're, that they're giving us that we can't expect that to continue ad nauseam. But it's good news today. So I wanted to include that little bit of, I suppose, warning as we, as we move forward, just to know that it's not probably always going to be so, but at least for this year, our cost for teachers' retirement system declined by about 4%, again, based on strong market performance. Our cost for disability insurance declined and miracle of miracles, our health insurance increased overall budget to budgets, only up by about 1%. The reason for that, that very much is a one-year, a one-year aberration, I guess, in the cost of health insurance. You'll recall that we've been working for a number of years, for several years, on all of our insurance, the schools' health insurance is provided through consortium, the Rochester Area Schools Health Plan. That, Penfield was a founding member of that. We've been participant in all the years of its existence. All of our employees, all of our employees are, that have health insurance, get it through that plan. And we made a fundamental change in the design of the plan this year and moved the plan to a self-funded plan. We've been inching towards that for a very long time and finally, this year, our application to, from, to Department of Financial Services was approved, were now self-funded. Why does that matter? One of the costs, one of the pieces of, it's a $200 million plan, one of the costs in that was $8 million worth of taxes associated with the Affordable Care Act. So when the Affordable Care Act was passed, part of the financing for that structure, and this still exists in spite of its sort of, what's that?
In spite of its sort of non-existence.
Sort of non-existence, right. It was $8 million worth of taxes to our plan. So those taxes don't apply to self-funded plans. So as a result of that single change, there's a one-year savings of $8 million. The cost of health insurance isn't, isn't a surprise, it's driven by increases in the cost of care and the cost of doctors and the cost of medicine, of prescriptions. That increase year-over-year averages around 10%. We're not, our plan isn't somehow magically immune to that. So next year, we won't enjoy those 1% change again, but you take it when you get it. And so that's some good news. And good news is a result of a lot of hard work, but finally paying off in this year's budget. So really, the decreases there sort of offset the increases. Declines in teachers' retirement, declines in disability insurance, which is small, but still a decline nonetheless, and in, and in medic, and a very modest increase in health insurance, nets out to that 122,000 or one-half of 1% increase. So that bar's filled in essentially flat. So year-over-year, 25% of our budget increases only a very small amount. So that's the, we have, and I'll show you in a moment, the entire budget picture, but that's just the expense side. So a budget has two sides and we've been, we began at the last meeting talking a little bit about the revenue side of the budget. I'll continue a little bit tonight and we'll have to finalize this by the next meeting. It remains in a little bit of flux because while we're here tonight with expenditure side not quite done, there's still some work left to be done, some changes to be made. But as we close in on a, on a expenditure side, we really don't know what's going on with the state of New York. Their budget is due April 1st. So by April 1st, the new state budget has to be in place and that includes state aid for Penfield. That's important for this reason. While the majority of our taxpayer, of our, of our revenue, so this pie is the same sized pie as our expenditures, our expenditures have to, our revenues have to equal our expenditures. And so 64% of everything we spend is supported by the taxpayers. That's the tax levy. 8% is everything else. Everything else from lost book fees and to payments in lieu of taxes, interest earnings, there's lots and lots of individual revenue items there, but they only add up to 8%. And 28%, nearly a third of our budget, is supported by the state of New York through state aid. That's state aid for general purposes, foundation aid that helps pay for everything we do, and specific aids that we often talk about, like BOSI's aid, or building aid, or transportation aid that are associated with particular programs. But all in all, all of those aid categories compose 28%. And as we sit here tonight, we really don't know yet what's going to happen with that. We've made some projections based on the governor's proposal, but we know it's not, it is never what the final answer is. And this year, as we've had previous conversations, it's a much harder year to sort of guess where we're going to come out. But we're not in bad shape for this, for this, while we're not complete, for the 68% of our budget, the two, you know, the two-thirds of our budget that the taxpayers contribute, we're at a 2% tax cap for the second year in a row. So that means inflation has increased to the point now, for two years in a row, where it's over the 2% mark. So that means the economy's heated up enough now that the cap is really truly, that, this portion of the cap is really truly functioning as a cap. Costs in general are going to be increasing, they are increasing. For the last year, they increased at about two and a half, 2.44%. So the formula that we use to figure out how much we are allowed to raise in taxes without a majority, a supermajority override, caps at 2%. This is the formula that was designed to squeeze schools starting to work. If you'll remember, when the cap, when inflation's under 2%, we use whatever inflation is. So in that year, in 1617, when inflation was .12, so one-tenth of 1%, we used in the formula calculation that, one-tenth of 1%. Now at 2.44, we use two. Allowable levy growth in schools will always trail over a long period of time, the rate of inflation, just by design. And so this is the result of that calculation for us. Never turns out to be 2%, but here you can see it used in the calculation. A little bit of increased capacity in the calculation for, for tax-based growth, new bricks and mortar. Pilots change, go down because of that, there's a little bit of additional cap space created by the formula. And we carried over some, some tax, we didn't tax at the cap. We were under the cap last year and so we get to bring a little bit forward into this year. All told, just under 3% would be the maximum we could offer a levy at without asking the vote. voters to approve it at 60% plus level. So, that's 2.99%. It says, this slide says, "We still need to confirm pilot agreements, still need to confirm and recalculate capital exclusions." We'll continue to do that. And as of today, this is what it is. But I left that, left that sort of cautionary language in there because this change is right up until the moment the board adopts. Those two things can move. I don't expect them to, but you never know, and they have in the past. So, with that, we've put together both sides of the budget. So, with some assumptions, some assumptions that the board provided guidance on, and some that we're sort of, sort of working towards as we work through this process. So, right now, all of the budget packages that you've reviewed and that we've discussed over those many meetings add up to about a $2.5 million increase. That's about 2.5% increase in the expenditure budget. Brings our total, grand total expenditure budget to about $100.6 million. On the revenue side, at 2.8%, so just slightly under the cap, we're at, that's a revenue of $1.7 million. Local revenue is essentially flat. Remember, that only composes 8% of the total. And state aid, we're at about 2%. The governor's proposal was not aimed towards schools essentially like Penfield, right? I mean, it was not designed to benefit Penfield schools. So, if I add those up, we're, as we sit here tonight, $225,000 shy of making a budget work. That's very similar, I don't think it's identical to what we talked about at the last meeting, but similar because the moving parts haven't really fundamentally changed. We've, you know, there have been some slight changes, so it is slightly different. I'm not, at this point, worried. We're still working on the expenditure side of the budget. There's still some changes to be made, both in the BOSI's budget, some increases and some decreases. I'll report those to you at the final. But mostly, mostly, we're really waiting for that state aid number to see where we come in. The board and, we have some levers to pull, we have reserves. We've talked about the levels of reserve that we're using to support this budget. We have choices around fund balance. There's construction built into the budget, so we can make this balance. It's just a matter of how does this all work out and where do we need to end up? So, we're very close, we're coming to the end, and I'd expect that we'll be somewhere in this range by the time we're done. The challenge, honestly, for the state legislature will be distribution. I believe, I think, I don't know, but I believe that they'll be distributing additional state aid this year. Who gets it? You know, how much state aid, how much funding for state aid in the state of New York goes up? It will. I'm confident that it will. The governor himself proposed an increase. The state legislature, both houses of the state legislature have said, "That's not enough." So, the pie will get bigger. But what happens to Penfield's slice is a very different question. So, that will have to wait and see. I'm hopeful for an on-time budget. The things that don't involve us, things like funding for subways and the MTA and taxes on rich people in the city of New York and medical, marijuana and all that seem to be getting worked out as we try and read the tea leaves. It's difficult to know, but I do think that they're committed to an on-time budget. It would be embarrassing, I think, for a new Democratic majority to not have one. So, we'll see. We do need that information, or we'll be forced to make our best estimate and go forward. Also on the ballot, I just want to briefly review what will be on the ballot when folks get to, get to the polls in May. Three members of the Board of Education, so two members for three-year terms, and one member's unexpired term that'll begin on May 21st and end on June 30th. So, on the ballot will be the election of three board members. A proposition for the general fund budget that we've been talking about. A bus, we always have a bus purchase proposition on. This year's will be for the purchase of four big buses, three little buses, and one eight-passenger bus, essentially a transit van kind of vehicle that can be used as a bus to transport students when we have those onesies and twosies. But also, our hope there is that it can be used instead of a bus in some cases. So, for example, transporting the football team, very often we'll send two buses because there's so much equipment. So, we need a bus for equipment kind of, and a bus for football players. We hope that with this kind of a vehicle, perhaps a coach could drive. That will be more efficient, and most importantly, save us a bus driver because this kind of vehicle, anyone could drive. So, we're trying to be creative about the ways that we address that bus driver shortage. So, we've included that in our bus purchase plan. Total cost is $730,000. We have reserves for bus purchase, so we will be taking about $250,000 out of that reserve and the remainder of its part of, and you've already reviewed that, part of the budget. And finally, a capital project proposition. So, roof replacement at Cobles Indian Landing and the high school, a chiller at Cobles, and athletic facilities upgrades at the high school. That's carpet replacement on the turf field and resurfacing the track, a total of $7,550,000. We'll, as I said, at the next meeting, we'll be coming again with sort of another review of the budget, discussions about where we're at in final, talking about estimated tax rates and the impact of our budget on tax rates. But all of that's moving towards the budget hearing on May 7th. It's the last formal and the only required conversation about the budget. After that, we complete our advertising, send out our budget newsletters and so on in advance of the election here at the high school, the budget vote and election here at the high school on May 21st. I went through that fairly quickly and sort of covered a lot of ground, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members? Mark, you just said the only required budget?
Yeah, there's, the law is, schools have been around for a long time. And in New York State, you know, we were all originally common schools. We were all little one-room schoolhouses essentially. And in fact, Tom and I just looked at a map as part of a boundary line dispute of all the little schools that turned into Penfield. So, but all, the law sort of continues, if you read the law itself, it envisions those little one-room schoolhouses, and we would have the budget hearing. We would all ride our horses to the schoolhouse, and we would gather and talk about, that's the budget hearing. And we would talk about what we're going to budget for next year, and then we'd raise our hand, and the budget is established for the year. So, that hearing still exists in the law. So, we have lots of meetings, we have this conversation, we go out and we meet with, we meet with staff. But that budget hearing is still, still part of the law, and when you read it, you sort of get a whiff of that much older time. So, none of the rest of this is required. But that hearing, that explanation of the budget is.
Okay.
And in fact, you'll read, I believe, we still read at the, we read the propositions at the meeting, and part of that says, "The election and the vote are not held here tonight, but instead will be held at the high school on this date." That's because of that. It was one time held here tonight, we'd all raise our hands.
Okay. But they don't say where to put the saddles.
No, no, no. There may not have been horses, I sort of made that part up.
That's interesting, but I never knew that. So, I appreciate, we had a little extra time tonight, so I appreciate that explanation. Any other questions or comments from Mark? Okay. Thank you, Mark.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, board members, we're on item five. Change orders. May I have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved to include the high school change orders for the capital project 2018? The chiller, the above change order is listed in our agenda, has been reviewed by and is supported by architect Vic Tommaselli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and deputy superintendent for business and finance Mark Sanzusi. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Renewal of contract with Delphi House. The district has contracted with Delphi House for the provision of substance abuse counselors for many years. For the 2018-19 school year, the contract provided one counselor at the high school, a .6 counselor at Bay Trail, and one counselor split between the four elementary schools, a total of 2.6 FTE. For 2019-2020, it is recommended that the counselor at Bay Trail be increased to 1.0 FTE. Accordingly, the attached contract provides for 3.0 substance abuse counselors with one counselor located at the high school, one located at Bay Trail, and one split between the four elementary schools. The contract is recommended for approval. Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to finalize contract terms and enter into a contract for services with Delphi Rise Services for the 2019-2020 school year at a cost of $132,783. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Donations. Donations totaling $4,039.50 for items in the 2018-19 budget were received by the district schools as shown. Indian Landing Elementary PTO, Arts and Education, $340. Cobles Elementary PTA, Arts and Education, $2,449.50. Harris Hill Elementary, Action for Healthy Kids, $250. Scribner Elementary, Wonderful Giving, $1,000. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $4,039.50 to the 2018-19 budget as shown above? The amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield schools and all Penfield parents, students, and staff for their support of this year's book fairs. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Policies for first read. Dr. Putnam?
Would love to share some policies for first read. Pretty basic changes, but our first policy, 5415, around fuel purchases and controls, really just some slight edits there for consistency of policies. For an example, we refer to, in all of our policies, the board, not the Board of Education. So, we made some minor changes like that. There's a regulation connected to that, and although the board doesn't necessarily have to approve regulation, we like to put those on there for transparency. That's basic controls over fuel purchases. Mark Sanzusi, Alan McNiff, and Gina from Transportation all reviewed and recommended the appropriate updates and changes that are found in that regulation. 5520, extra classroom activity funds, a small change deleting a New York State pamphlet title that's no longer used. It used to say, "Refer to this pamphlet," which is no longer in existence, so we removed that from the policy. Regulation for 5520 replaced or removed the word insure and some small edits for consistency, no major changes. And policy 5630 around reserve funds really was just replacing the word insure. We've talked about that, the board's looked at that as the word insure legally means that we're going to, you know, 100% guarantee something. We've left it in place where it is law and legal, but in some other areas, we've just for consistency found some other wording because sometimes there are simply things out of your control. And so, that's where we are. So, pretty minor changes, they're all up on the website with the changes noted, and we'll bring these for second read in any comments at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. All right, board election update. At this time, I would like to make the community aware that board member John Otney has resigned from the board due to personal reasons. We would like to thank John for his service. This means that there will be three available seats at the board election in May, two seats for three-year terms, and one seat to fill the remainder of Mr. Otney's term, which expires on June 30th, 2020. Residents who are interested in running for the board must submit a petition to the district clerk by April 22nd, 2019. Okay. Commitment, MCSBA committee meetings. What? Where? I'm sorry. I bet I missed. Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, so, what I missed that we're going to discuss now is the 2019-2020 Board of Education draft schedule of meetings. So, it's all there, starting on the July 9th meeting. Look at how many meetings we attend every year. So, that's that.
Can I just point out with that, Catherine? This gets voted on next meeting, I believe. But I believe I showed at agenda setting, we talked a little bit, and I just want to point out, so everybody knows, is we shifted some things around the November meeting because we moved it to the 19th. The way that Thanksgiving break falls, the district has Wednesday off, and originally, if we do every two weeks, it would be a meeting that Tuesday before break, and thought that, you know, it's hard for folks if they're looking to travel. So, we moved that a little bit, you'll notice that on the calendar. But I just wanted to give kudos for Sharon, who noticed it and said that might be a tough meeting for folks to be at if it's right before Thanksgiving.
Thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now, can I, can I move on? All right, thank you. So, the MCSBA committee meetings, Tom, you were going to take information exchange?
Sure. Yeah, information exchange was great. We had some folks from Churchfield, Chi-Lai, including their superintendent, some administrators, but most importantly, four of their students, and they talked about restorative justice. So, they've been implementing restorative justice, really focused on the high school, but looking at a K-12 model. When we look at restorative justice, they did a great job really talking about the length of time it takes to truly implement that district-wide and some of the pitfalls that they're still kind of working out. In short, when people talk about restorative justice, they typically talk about alternatives to suspensions, but it's much more than that. And really, it's around having students really not just have a consequence, but learn from that behavior. And there's some things called peace circles, which is part of it, where really, it's a lot about mediation with students. It's around coming together to talk about really the wrongdoing that might have taken place. And when done correctly, and this is what they're kind of still trying to work through their implementation, is if there's an issue in a classroom, it's not necessarily send the referral to the administrator who's going to deal with it maybe the next day, maybe the day after that, but really training teachers to deal with it right there in the classroom and bring people together in a circle to have a conversation on how somebody's actions impacted, not just themselves, but other people. So, it's really powerful. I will tell you that the high school has been digging into restorative justice a bit. They're sort of our pilot program as we look towards a possible implementation. We don't have a plan yet to roll that out, but it's something that's getting more and more traction. It's been around for a long time, but they did a really nice job. So, I encourage you to look at the minutes from information exchange, and we'll continue to sort of dig into that a little bit. The one thing I'll also add is that it's not for everybody. So, for example, if we are talking about a student who unfortunately makes a really bad decision and gets a suspension from school, they may be able to come back to school early if they agree to go through the restorative justice process, which is making amends, having a meeting, talking about the choices, and learning from those. And so, again, I think it's some pretty interesting. The other partner that talked a little bit was East High School, and their partnership with the University of Rochester, their focus really right from the get-go has been around restorative justice. So, I found it really informational and pretty insightful, and shared that information with our high school principal. And again, I think as a district, you'll hear more about this process and program over the next couple of years.
I'm excited about that whole concept.
Yep, and they were really open to, if somebody asked, you know, like, "Where is staff?" Like, because it's, you know, so they basically said that it's about a third of staff took this and ran with it and are loving it. And a third of staff not really there yet and struggling. And then, the other third is somewhere in the middle. And that's just about everything with implementation, you know? So, it's, you know, they can have a policy, but the policy doesn't change behaviors. And they're also really clear that some things are not restorative justice-related. You know, there are certain things, violence in a school, we're not having a mediation peace circle, you know? There's just a consequence. But in some other opportunities, if you talk of maybe a student who makes bad decisions around drugs and alcohol, you know, we have Delphi in our schools. You just approved a contract, so we have three full-time staff members from Delphi Rise. Rise. Is there some way we can incorporate more of that as we look towards it? Being tardy to class, being late to school, saying inappropriate words, these are all things that, you know, a strict consequence, which we use, and we also do a lot of restorative practices without calling it restorative justice. We're always working to try to get kids back into school and back into the classroom, but it's really a process that goes along with it. So, I think you can tell I was pretty excited.
Yeah, yeah, but I can see the value of, with certain students, if you can help them see how their behaviors affect themselves. Because ultimately, they're hurting themselves, but how their behavior affects other people and their fellow classmates, their teachers, the class itself, you know, the structure of the class. I mean, you know, you could see theoretically where that could decrease the amount of trouble they might incur later on in life.
And that question came up. They don't have data yet because they're still pretty new in terms of, but what the national trend with restorative justice practices is that it decreases disciplinary referrals, it decreases suspensions, and there's an increase in academic success for students. Because ideally, we want kids in the building and in school.
Yeah.
And so, that's what it sort of focuses on.
That's great. Thank you.
And I would just say, because you've been to the Monroe County School Board stuff, this was students presenting, which was a really cool, you know, we talked about when students come to the Board meetings to present, but they did, they did a fantastic job. So, kudos to Churchville-Chilei and their students.
Great. Thank you. John, you were going to take the Board President's meeting?
Yes. I ran the Board President's meeting on behalf of Mike Suffolatto, who wasn't able to be with us that night. And this is where, as I mentioned, the Board Presidents of all the school districts get together periodically and sit around and really, it's an open forum, talking about issues that they may have with their district, their Board, and it's just a very worthwhile event. And Catherine has been able to participate this year. I've been there for a number of years. And, you know, the one thing I think we've learned is, you know, we have the answers to a lot of the questions that have come up in that group, and we're able to provide resources for other Boards and other districts because, you know, we're kind of, we deal with things in a little bit different way. So, it's very positive. There's never an agenda. We never know what questions will come up, but everybody walks away feeling that they've learned something. So, and usually, out of the 19 districts, we usually get 15 will come to the dinner.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was a good meeting, too. Great. Thanks, John. And labor relations? Barb?
Well, Lisa, Tom and I were just last Wednesday at the Labor Relations meeting, and it was on the review of the RASH, the healthcare consortium. And what was very impressive is where they started and where they are now. I mean, it's just, I know Mark's shaking his head, but to someone in my position to just see what was the vision that all of you who started it, I just can't give you enough kudos because the money that it's saving, I mean, you already touched on the fact that we, $8 million, we didn't have to pay in taxes.
That's amazing.
That's huge.
Yeah, it is.
And just, you know, there's a lot of numbers going on in the presentation, but it's all positive. It's all very, very positive. And is there anything else I need to?
No, I, yeah, I think.
I mean, they're pushing towards all school districts to encourage their members to take the high deductible. And that alone, you know, now I'm at this end of my career. Gosh darn it, if I had been back in the day, I would have taken it. Because it, it's a win-win-win. So, and of course, I know I'm saying that, but I just, I'm always very impressed when Scott and who's the other?
It was probably Mike, was it Mike Martone from Gallup?
Yes, yes. I mean, it's just, it's just exciting news. And here's my only question, and I meant to ask that when I was there. Is Monroe County Schools, are we one of the few in New York State that does something like this, Mark?
There are a number, there's lots of consortiums. So, Wayne County has its own consortium, for example. So, you know, the consortium ideal, idea isn't unique to Monroe County by any stretch of the imagination. I'm not sure how many of those have elected to become self-funded. I had the sense when we worked through the process that it was kind of unusual, only because Department of Financial Services has to issue the authority to do that.
Right.
And they didn't seem to, it wasn't a well-worn path.
You didn't embrace it, right.
Yeah, it was, it sort of felt like we were the first ones ever there. So, while I don't know for a fact that there are not any other self-funded consortiums, most of my, my sense of it is that that's relatively rarer.
Okay. Well, it was, I was duly impressed and excited for a win for everybody, the school district, for the employee, and you're all still getting, we're all still getting quality healthcare. So, thank you. Thank you. Do you have anything?
I agree.
All right. Great. Thank you. Okay. The next item up is our school tours, which is, okay, there we go. So, we have one Thursday. Well, we also have, don't we have that concert in the morning?
Yeah, so, this week is actually working with ACT for Education. This is our celebrating public schools week. So, I'm looking at Nancy Bradstreet, our Director of Communication, who's in the audience, who did a lot of work with this, but we're actually inviting in some dignitaries, including the Boards invited and the Town Board, and some lovely folks from Atria to come over and get a preview of the evening concert during the day. And that's taking place at 9:00 or 9:30?
I think it's at 9:00.
9:00 AM at the PHS auditorium, and just a great way to showcase how wonderful public schools are, how great Penfield is, and it should be nice. So, thanks to Nancy, who is always the magic behind these things when they happen. So, thank you.
And then following that.
And then following that, we'll do board tours over at Scribner at 10:30, be there for about an hour, and then we'll head over to Bay Trail, which will be easy because they're connected.
Right.
To wrap up that day's board tours.
Right. And then the following tours, well, one is on April 12th. We'll do the high school in Harris Hill, and then April 25th, Cobble's and Indian Landing.
Yep.
So, all that's coming up. And then, let's see, you don't have the date of our next meeting down here.
It's down.
See? I'm having issues tonight.
We have more.
There they are. Okay. So, our next policy committee meeting is April 11th.
Yep.
Okay? And then, our next Board?
Board meeting.
Board meeting is the 23rd?
Yes.
Wow. Really?
It's because of April break. There's only one in April.
Yeah. Wow.
Can I do new business before you jump to there?
I don't see anything.
No. Oh, can I mention something?
Oh, yes.
Do you have new business?
Do I have? No. So, I do. I just wanted to let the Board know, because it just fell today, is that I actually met with our member relations manager from NISBA. And so, he's new. His name is Patrick Longo. And NISBA, this is the second time I've got to meet with the member relations because they're on a three-year rotation where they visit each school district once every three years, to say that. But there's just not enough of them to go around.
I see.
And they leave from Albany. So, this is my second member relations manager. And something he said, I just want to share, is we just talked about advocacy and the needs and shared, you know, shared a big packet of information, and we know because we're very connected with Monroe County School Board. So, my two takeaways I want to share with the Board is, one, we have an incredible Board, so thank you for your service. Two, the Monroe County School Boards, we really are lucky to be in Monroe County and be a public school in Monroe County because the advocacy, working with Sherri Johnson and the Monroe County School Board is amazing, that I honestly think NISBA's a little jealous of. So, and honestly, it's really great stuff. And the other thing is, he meets with, he or she, whoever the member relations, they purposely meet with superintendents and not the Board because he said, "I realize that your Board is volunteer. They probably work full-time. They have lives outside of this, and they're not getting paid. You're getting paid, so you have to be here. So, it's easier to meet with you." And I, but what it really took was just a reminder for the community that, you know, you're all volunteer, you put a lot of time and a lot of work in. We have, you know, some open seats, and ultimately, it's a lot of work to be a Board Member, rewarding, I hope, but a lot of work. So, I just wanted to mention that, and I can share his contact information, but basically said, anything we need for NISBA, you know, they're here for us. And that the Rochester, the convention this year is in Rochester, and I just wanted to share publicly that we've actually submitted two proposals to have potentially a music group play. We hope we get selected. And also robotics to have a table there. So, if you think we go to New York City for the convention and you're walking through and seeing all these great things, I'd be really cool if we had some Penfield stuff there.
Yeah, it would be cool.
So, fingers crossed. I look at Nancy again, the magic behind much of this. I mean, the audition to get your music group to play, I took that for granted going to conventions and having the music play. And I always just figured, oh, they just called up a local school district and said, "Hey, will you play?" There's like a CD. I had to sign a letter.
Oh, wow.
It's like they're going to review it. So, fingers crossed Penfield gets to showcase here in Rochester. So, I just wanted to share that about NISBA, and thank you.
Well, and thank you.
Actually, can I say something?
Sure.
I just, since you were talking about Sherri Johnson, like, big kudos to Sherri Johnson because we were talking about the whole early intervention thing, and I stopped to talk to her when we were at Labor Relations, and she goes, "Oh, yeah, we're all over it. Like, I talked to these people, and I told her I was going to DC." And she was like, "Oh, tell me who you're seeing. I'll tell you who we talked to." So, it's just, she's so passionate.
Yeah.
About our schools and our children, and it's just really lovely to see.
She's very involved.
Yeah. I mean, she's, yeah. So, anyway, just wanted to tell you that.
Well, I couldn't agree more.
Great.
All right. Any other comments?
I'm all bowled.
Okay. All right. There being no other business, may I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned